Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Angela Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Here.
And Mr. Erko.
Here.
We have a call.
Opening statement?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, C-231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on the Central Administration Notice Board. Copies of this notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Thank you. So, board president comments. So, I can't believe it's almost the end of the year. Time flew by very quickly. And next meeting, and next week, we're gonna have a student recognition, one of my favorite meetings again. And also, you know, the end of, or 26th, right? 26th is the student graduation. So, this year JP is gonna go first, and Edison High is gonna go a little bit later. So, you know, congratulations to all the students and all the staff for another good year, and can't wait for the student recognition next Tuesday. Dr. Alderelli?
Thank you very much, Board President Shi. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope all is well. I echo Mr. Shi's sentiments in that we are in the final homestretch of the year. Special congratulations to all of our staff for another successful school year here in Edison Township. Next Tuesday's meeting is gonna be the highlight of the year. We're celebrating student accomplishments. It's a wonderful night, usually a big attendance, a lot of school spirit also is shared on that evening, so it's definitely something to celebrate. Speaking of some things to celebrate too, what I'd also like to just highlight are some of the hard work and efforts that kind of came out of our engagement pillar this year from our strategic plan, and that is the recognition of our newly designed, fully functional, and user-friendly website. We have been recognized by the National School Public Relations Association throughout the nation for the 2025 publication of not only our website, but our newsletter, The Insider, as well as our recruitment video, right? So, we've got, you know, threefold in relationship to that. So, we've got our branding, not only on our website, but information as to what's going on in the schools, what we prioritize, and also, on the heels of that, our ability to recruit, you know, the very best staff that there is out there. So, I would be remiss if I did not congratulate Ms. Heather Daniel, who has done an unbelievable job in not only, yeah, yeah, definitely. Not only from a vision perspective, but from an execution perspective as well, too. So, a trusted colleague and a wonderful addition to our staff. So, I agree with the applause there.
Thank you, and thanks to the board.
And in the spirit of feedback and compliments, we are at the end of the year as well, too. We are sending out our students, staff, and parental surveys tomorrow.
Staff and parents are tomorrow.
Staff and parents are tomorrow.
Parents have a chance to preview the students.
Perfect.
Preview from Monday will come to six through eight three years emails, and parents are encouraged to.
Yeah, perfect. So, I'm actually just gonna read what Ms. Daniel just said right now. Probably, yeah. Yeah, so tomorrow, on June 13th, the families and staff are gonna be receiving an email inviting them to complete our end-of-year survey. Obviously, this feedback is a critical role in improving student experience, as well as parental communication and outreach. Students in grades six through 12 will receive an email on Monday afternoon with a link to their very own confidential student survey. Obviously, an optional survey as well, too, but we, one of the greatest pieces that have kind of come out of some of the things that we're moving forward next year has been student feedback. Not only our Sages group, but, you know, recent classroom visits and pieces along those lines. So, very excited about that. In addition, on July 1st, we are going to be transitioning to a platform called Parent Square, similar to Remind, which is an application that provides communication between teachers, and students, and family members, coaches, things along those lines. We are currently providing training for our administrative group, as well as turnkeying that to our staff moving forward. So, those are just a couple highlights I wanted to share. Just a brief review of Tuesday's agenda. As you can see from our administrative agenda, our annual adoption of all existing policies currently for the upcoming school year, as well as the adoption of various plans that are mandated by the state, and you could see them accordingly there. Our biomedical plan, our biomedical security plan, crisis management, the official newspapers that we utilize to advertise board meetings and such, as well as publish our news releases, as well as some key components that we have to appoint from a personnel standpoint, treasurer of school monies, grant coordinators as well. There's a resolution also, an annual resolution, to participate in the NJSIAA, as it is every year, and the final item under administration is the board's approval of the March HIB report. For curriculum and instruction, we have our summer schedules. That is just a outline of the schools that summer school and extended school year are going to take place in, as well as the hours associated with that. We have our professional development plans and out-of-district workshops for the month of June. We have our award ceremony for student recognition, which we are extremely excited about, and two field trips, Edison High School Varsity Cheerleading, attending the NCA Cheerleading Camp in August, as well as Woodrow Wilson attending the FBLA Conference nationally. So, we're actually really excited about that. Last but not least, we have our pupil special services, our out-of-district placements for our students, as well as our approval of the related service providers that we do annually. And, Mr. Shi, that concludes my portion of the agenda. I can turn it over to my colleague to my right.
Thank you, Dr. Alderelli. So, under the Finance and Facilities section, obviously, item one is gonna be the standard bills list. We're reapproving our lunch and breakfast prices for next year, which are staying the same. Under the contract portion, you're gonna see a lot of renewals for our professional services, some of our suppliers, software providers for our educational software. We have a contract settlement with the Facilities Managers Association, so that's great news. But we have a really big item here, which I like to think is good. We did go out to market, I should say, our health services broker went out to market for dental and for stop-loss insurance, and we did receive lower pricing. I think we saved all told between dental and health, just over $400,000.
$440.
He's a numbers guy. What can I say? No, but that is right. $440. So, it's a huge thank you to Ryan Tolan, Dan Henry from Doyle Alliance Group. We appreciate their diligence in turning that around, because it's significant savings to the board. Under procurement, you'll see a lot of renewals. We're gonna have, well, one is our tuition rates for next year, which are arguably much cheaper than the entire state and the county. Our used-to-state contract authorization for cooperative purchasing, and then all the different cooperative purchasing programs that we partner with for savings and purchases of goods and services. The big item, though, here is finally, the award of the JMI Classroom Edition and Gym Project. This has been a long time in the making and planning. We've had a lot of hiccups, but finally, it's here. We're gonna be awarding it Tuesday night, just over $16 million, which is substantially under budget. So, this is great news of its additional monies we can put back into our facilities. Okay. Under grants, we're gonna be accepting two grants. We do have a couple of change orders on the agenda for the ongoing projects. And under transportation, this is gonna get updated again. We have a bunch of renewals. Obviously, we have routes we're gonna be awarding and renewing for next year, but we have a large bid that came in today that's under attorney review, so that'll get added to the agenda, so we can make sure we got routes for all the students next year. And that's what I got.
Thank you very much. So, for pretty smooth. Jerry?
Yes. Mr. Toth?
Yes, sir.
Can you clarify, all students or all qualified students?
So, in terms of transportation, right, we're securing routes for all of the mandated transportation. Anybody that is also on the courtesy busing, right, anybody that's applied, right, if we have available seating, we've actually added buses this year. That was one of the board's goals, I believe, and we did add some buses, which is great. So, now, we're gonna be able to offer more seats to people, or students, I should say, or families that would like to, you know, partake in the courtesy busing option. So, is it every single student? No, because some kids walk to school. But listen, we've really, as a board, expanded the scope of our transportation services to the families and students at Edison.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate that.
No problem.
Clarifying, because, you know, some people think other.
Thank you. Thank you. We're clarifying that. Okay? Now, we move on. Public comments. Yes.
Sue Campione is in New Jersey. Just a comment and a question. I'm not a computer programmer, but when the parents sign onto the parent portal, it pops up for the subscription busing. It's causing a lot of confusion for some of the kids, especially our ESL learners, who qualify because they're far enough, they don't need subscription busing, and they're sending emails like crazy and coming down to guidance like all day long, because they're very confused. Then, when they go to look for a form, there is no form. Is there a way that that could pop up only if they need subscription busing to fill out the form? I mean, I don't know if it's something that that can happen, but it's causing a lot of confusion. So, you know, we, and some of them, it's hard for the parents to understand, you don't have to fill out a form, you get a bus. So, I just thought I'd point that out. The other thing, I was looking at the summer offerings, and I saw that there is a transition to kindergarten and a transition to high school, but there is nothing for transition to middle school. And the sixth graders have a big transition when they go from elementary school to middle school. So, I was just wondering if that is something that, if it can't be this summer, but at least in the future, to think about, because it is a big transition. The sixth graders have a tough time when they come. So, if we're giving it for the other transitions, just something that I saw was missing, the middle child syndrome, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Alderelli, you wanna say a couple words?
Yeah, I gotta take a look at the parent portal piece in relationship to that. We'll probably flush that out in our upcoming transportation meeting. As for the transition to middle school, yeah, I think that that's probably something that we can talk to, you know, the coordination between our two chief academic officers, right? Yeah, maybe the part of the engagement pillar.
Perfect. Okay. Anybody else?
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. It just came to mind when Mr. Romano brought up about the subscription busing. Years ago, there was a thing that subscription busing had to be able to maintain the dollar figure that we weren't paying, the board wasn't paying extra for the subscription busing. But I know because you put some of the subscribers on a mandated bus, if there's room, is that evening out the costs for the subscription busing?
Any other questions?
No.
So, the subscription busing is self-sustaining? If we only have two people signing up for that route, we're not gonna part of busing there? Anybody else? Okay. Brian?
Good evening, everybody. Brian Rivera, Edison. So, I quickly was able to look at the agenda, so I want to actually direct these questions to Vishal, actually. You're chairman of the Finance Committee, and probably roll over to Eddie and John as well. So, I was looking at the cost for student pupil. And last year, in 2024-25, kindergarten, 15,561. This year, it's 14,304, difference of 1,257 per student. Grades one to five, 19,145, 2024-25, 25-26, 16,821, difference of $2,324. Grades six to eight, 18,691. Next year, $16,044, difference of $2,647. Grades nine to 12, 17,984. Next year, 15,797, difference $2,187. Learning disabilities, 18,443. Next year, 16,615, difference of $1,828. Multiple disabilities, 26,819. Next year, 24,796, difference of $2,023. Autism, 28,189, uh, 29, 20, I'm sorry, $28,189 last year. Next year, $25,638, difference of $2,551. Pre-K disabilities, last year, $30,775. Next year, zero. So, I'm looking at the difference of cost of student, per student last year and this year. If you look at the average of the whole subgroup, it's about $2,000 for each child. Times that by 17,000 kids in our district, we just cut $34 million that was directly related going to students. So, I'm just curious about that. Maybe I'm reading it wrong, but I'm looking at cost per student. I know that this is the amount of money that they had at some point, and now the money is less. So, with that, I had some questions, but I'm seeing you guys shake your head that I'm wrong. So, I'll let you point me in the right direction. But I did have questions regarding this, because, "Over the past several years, Edison Public Schools have seen a steady or even growing student enrollment. With that in mind, why is there such a significant drop in per-student funding across multiple grade levels and special education categories for the 25-26 school year? Can the board explain the complete elimination of funding for the pre-K students with disabilities? Has this ever happened before in Edison, and what are the short and long-term implications for those children and their families? Historically, Edison has invested strongly in special education. What changed this year that led to decreases for $2,000 per student in each category, like autism and multiple disabilities? And finally, what specific impact will these cuts have on classroom support, special services, and staffing? Will programs be reduced, or is the district expecting to provide the same level of service with fewer resources? I just noticed that we paid a certain amount per student last year, and in every category and grade level, it's decreased. So, I'm just curious why?
Okay. Any other questions?
There's no minutes, so.
Just write it.
I can't see.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes and 14 seconds.
I'll yield my minutes for the answers.
Okay. So, John, you wanna?
So, right, so when you're looking at the tuition rates, those are rates, they are estimated rates that are generated through the budget for tuition students, if should they have come from out-of-district here. If you look to speak to special ed, yeah, the costs have gone down quite a bit. That is in one part, do, is Dr. Tu here? I gotta congratulate you. His alternate school program has brought a lot of revenue back into the district. Now, we're not paying as much money for students to go out out-of-district for programs that we can service them here with. Some of the other items are, you know, we are constantly doing things to decrease costs, less supplies that are needed, more inventory control, cheaper services through bidding, RFPs, competitive contracts. But like I said, it's just, it's an estimated number that the budget produces you. After the school year is over, you'll have a reconciled number that is audited and then certified by the New Jersey DOE that will true up your actual tuition costs. So, if we did have students that came here, and we were charging them the estimated cost, we would bill back the district that was sending them here, the difference. So, it is just an estimated cost for a tuition that is generated by the DOE software. It's been like that for over 15, 20, as long as I've been ever working with that software.
So, no services, resources, and stuff are being cut?
Excuse me. No bad on force, please. We'll answer your question.
All right. And Mr. Shi, if I could piggyback just on, and we, this would also apply for students, Mr. Toth, just correct me if I'm wrong, in relationship to a recent policy that we passed regarding the opportunity for parents to pay tuition, right? So, you have a fourth-grade student who has been in the district, and their parents move, they have the option to remain in the school district for, say, three months, and they would utilize the prorated rate that's here.
Yeah, this is your, this would be your benchmark, right? Should you have, let's say, a senior who, his parents moved to wherever, East Brunswick. The student obviously has friends here, it's senior year to, you know, he doesn't wanna leave, or she doesn't wanna leave. You know, the board would have an opportunity to prorate whatever the tuition rate, which it is for high school, and then charge that to the family for the remainder of the year, in order for them to attend here, because technically, they'd be required to go to, you know, their residing district.
Why the large difference? There's a huge difference.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Can someone ask for me?
Excuse me. We'll answer them.
Yeah, I mean, sure, if you look at the budget in general overall, right, a lot of costs have come down. We've saved a lot of money through inventory control, bidding, our services that we've procured through competitive contracting, whether that be professional services, we've gotten at better rates. We've done a really nice job at that. One of the biggest costs in, on the, of the budget is, you know, special ed-related causes, and that's not just, you know, services, but also tuitions. We've done a nice job with creating programs here, so we can offer those services, rather than having to send, you know, students out, because all of those lines fall into, you know, like the special ed-related costs.
So, keeping the 10 kids you have at that building saved you $34 million? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I'm not saying it's just that building. There's programs throughout the district. I believe Dr. Tu can speak more to it than I, that we utilize for students.
But I think to clarify, from Mr. Shi and the board's perspective, these tuition rates are simply rates for students that are, not are, it's not the cost of educating a student. No, no services have been cut for any student, from special education services, from our multiply disabled pieces. These are simply students that would not otherwise attend Edison Township Public Schools. It is a tuition rate that is generated through, obviously, DOE software. It's something that we would charge individuals, not the cost of educating them in-house.
Correct. Even the, even.
So, how much am I paying for my child right now to educate them, based on what you posted on the agenda? Where am I paying?
You're talking about your per-pupil cost? I don't have that number in front of me, but I could give that to you. I think you have my number. If you'd like to give me a call, we can, I could give you that, the estimated per pupil, give you last year's per pupil.
I know if I send in.
Excuse me, Mr. Alderelli, time's up. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Yes.
Can I, I have a question.
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
All right. You know, you're hypothetical that a senior student is gonna move to East Brunswick, for example, and then they would have to pay tuition.
Not to interrupt, but that'd be a colossal mistake.
But I know in the past, if we had senior students that were moving out, we always extended that courtesy, as long as the parent provided transportation, there was no tuition. Is that still in effect?
It is, still.
It's still in effect.
Now, so the law changed and mandated that board, that you have to charge a tuition rate currently. There's no more discretion on the part of the board. So, the board would have to take a look at the approved tuition rates here, and then charge accordingly. And much like you, Ms. White, too, right? So, if a family has, you know, spent their entire career here in Edison Township, of course, I think the board would feel the same way. We would obviously extend that courtesy to the parents. The law, we actually just passed the policy, I believe, in April of this year, in which it mandates it in.
Thank you so much.
Yep, sure.
Yeah, the thing that they're stopped paying property taxes, so we're getting our money back from them. That's, that's, that's what it is, right? If they move out, we don't get any property tax from them.
Right.
And if the, if we don't.
But like, live a month or something, that's the same.
Well, if we don't charge them, then other people is picking up the tab, so.
Yeah, okay.
Also, middle schools, you know, fifth graders, you know, the last year, yeah, 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 fifth graders, and you know, eighth graders and seniors.
Anyone.
Yeah. So, try not, you know, it's last year for whatever the school they're in. We tried to extend the courtesy, let them stay, but they gotta cough up some money. Yeah. Thank you. So, any other public comments? Yes, Matt?
Yeah, I just wanna jump on top of that, 'cause I actually had a student years ago, and I know they said if you came through the system and senior year, he actually was, East Brunswick, I'll be honest.
Oh.
And senior year.
So, that was the student we were talking about.
Right. He was driving in, and, you know, there was no tuition because that's what the law was. I also didn't realize that the law changed on that. But it does make sense, because you are losing tax revenue, as well as, et cetera. And the other thing with that, we used to have some students that just opted to come, and they would be charged. Sometimes, it was like a child of a faculty member. I remember guidance counselor JP Stevens, his son did that, and they would charge him the per pupil, you know, to be able to come to the Edison Schools. And down the road, I know it's just that we got so overcrowded that that wasn't a possibility anymore, because I actually checked in, not for my own children, but for somebody else's. And when Dan Michaud was sitting in Jonathan's seat, he said, "We just can't do it anymore, because we just don't have the space anymore." So, I just wanna comment real quickly, so, 'cause I don't wanna do this Tuesday. I know it's gonna be a longer night with student recognition and all. So, you know, we have the recognition program, obviously, the club and sports thing, but I know I was at the Edison Senior Awards Night briefly, before the board meeting, and at the JP Stevens. And, you know, again, it's just incredible, the scholarships, the awards our kids get, the colleges they get into. And again, it's really a testament to everyone involved, the students, the staff. You know, I know it was my last, I was very, you know, touched to go and wanted to go, because it was really my last set of students that are graduating this year. So, to sit here and see them again was wonderful. And I know many of the people in this room were at the awards ceremony, I think they'll agree with me. It's a great night. I know ETA, we give out scholarships, so it's always great to see. Thank you, Sue, for attending and giving them out for both groups, Edison and JP. The other thing is, you know, mentioned again, with two weeks left of school, it is amazing, when you blink of an eye, the school year is just about over. Last night, we did have our ETA retirement dinner. So, first of all, I'd like to thank members of the administration that came. We had five of the board members, Mr. Shi, Ms. Peng, Mr. Romano, Ms. White, and Mr. Erko. It's always a wonderful night. As I mentioned, as part of my presentation, over 1,226 years of, you know, experience that is moving on. So, you know, you can, you can replace a body, but you can't replace that experience. So, you know, thank you to all of our retirees, the people that have put the time and effort into our district. Again, I thank you guys for coming to our affair. You know, it's always nice. I really do enjoy, sometimes we're at odds with each other. We don't always agree, but it just shows that we do get along in many ways, and the support for our staff, our students, and for each other to an extent, because we are all in it together for the benefit of our students. So, thank you.
Thank you. Matt, just repeat, how much is the ETA scholarship?
Sue can actually answer that.
So, we give three out at each high school, and there is two $500 scholarships for future teacher, two $500 scholarships for a future nurse, and then $2,000 at each high school for the ETA main scholarship. They get $500 a year, every year they're in college.
I want you to repeat it. So, last time, we said not a lot of students apply, and that's why I want you to repeat it. All right, ma.
Make sure when they come out, those applications usually in December.
Exactly, exactly. December, yeah. Thank you. Anybody else? A, Sinan, can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion to close.
Okay. Now, board member comments.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
Just real quick, in the transportation, somewhere along in the forums, we have to stress that if your student is out for an extended period of time, the student loses their bus seat, number one. Number two, please do not put your student on just any bus. It's an insurance problem, and we don't know who's on the bus. So, when someone gets on a bus that they're not supposed to be there, that becomes a real liability problem for everybody. So, please, if there's a way that we can take and accentuate that letter, or those, that line, to explain to people, to explain to parents, that, you know, every seat on every bus. every seat on every bus is taken. But because there's a child that is not on that bus that day, you just can't take him, walk up and put your child on a bus. So we have to come up with a plan where we actually have to educate our parents. So that would be one thing that I would really stress because if anything happened, and, and God forbid anything happens, it's a nightmare. So please, if you have a bus, understand that if you're out for an extended period of time, I believe it's ten days, twelve days,
Something like that.
You lose your seat, and then your seat goes to the next available person on the list. Number two, make sure you do not put your child on a bus. That person is not entitled to that bus. That's a real problem. So please, can we do something with the verbiage to show it, to make people understand it? Because that is a real problem. Thank you.
Thank you. John? Mr. She? I'm sorry.
Nope, please, Mr. Patel.
Well, I just wanted to request to the, you know, people, like, the public comment time, it's for the time for us to receive the constructive feedback and hear your concerns and hear the community dialogue. And I can say this on behalf of the entire board, that we welcome your opinions and concern. However, I request all of you to keep your remarks focused on an issue and not on a people. Bring up the issues, stay focused on the issue, doesn't matter who from the DIAS resolves the issue. Refrain from calling out the names. Thank you. Thank you. Any other board member comments? Yeah, Jenny?
Okay. I went to several things, or a few things that were very interesting. The first one is at JMI, and they did their time capsule opening, which was so, so great. But the thing that was so outstanding about that particular function where the kids themselves, the students, did a magnificent job in presenting all of that. They went so far as to compose a song and perform it. They did just a beautiful, beautiful thing, and if you were able to go see it, it was well worth it. After the, you know, the next thing I went to was the scholarships at JP Stevens, and that always is so impressive, you know, just as Matt said. The amount of scholarships that are given, you know, and the students, how well they have performed along with their, you know, their teachers, you know, they, it's, you know, it makes you just so proud of this district. And lastly, I went to the ETA function last night, and it's, you know, it's so, it's a bittersweet thing. You know, it's, you're happy for them because they're all going to retiring, but the experience, as he says, is lost. And, you know, that's what we have to count on, all our new people. You know, but that was, that's it for me. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Ralph.
Thank you, Mr. She. Again, I attended a few different functions. I attended at Woodrow Wilson, the YPAR, which was an excellent, excellent night. I didn't know what YPAR meant, but it's youth participatory, tary, action research. The kids were great. All four middle schools participated at Woodrow Wilson. A lot of administrators there, a lot of ETA members, a lot of students creating apps and things along those lines, so it was very impressive. There was one student walking around with a QR code wrapped around her, back and front, and she had me scan it, and she was showing me what she invented as far as schedule, you know, appointments and things like that, so you don't miss any classes and things along those lines. But it was very impressive. So I was happy to attend that. Also, the athletic awards night at Edison High School, I attended. Mr. Ross and Mr. Sandell did a great job honoring all the athletes and their accomplishments throughout this spring program. So that was fun to be, yeah. And then again, last night, I was at the ETA retirement party. It's always nice to see my children's former teachers now retiring. So it was an impressive night, and I think, I think the best thing that came out of it was, what was the saying, Matt? Something about lesson plans. Life, life plans are more important than lesson plans. And I thought that, that stuck with me all night. Life plans are more important than lesson plans. So take care of your life first and then worry about your lesson plans. Thank you, Mr. She.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So, Sinan? So I just want to say a couple of things that, you know, Mr. Toth mentioned it, that we finally had a bid opening for the long overdue JMI school. And, you know, came down, came way below the, what we anticipated. So we're going to have on the agenda for approval. So finally, we'll have an expansion for the JMI. After that, only one more school left with the trailers. We've got to get rid of all the trailers and put them in the brick and mortar classrooms. The other thing is scholarship. These kids are amazing. So many scholarships from different areas, thanks to ETA. And I'd also like to thank the Y family for giving our scholarship in memory of Anthony. I also want to say that some of our vendors came through as well. They gave back to the community, which I like to see. I want the, the vendors that gave scholarship at DMR, Atamo. And also, I want to mention specifically about our food vendor, Marshall. They gave four scholarships, five thousand dollars each at each of the high school. So it's good money, twelve fifty per student. And the other thing is the retirement party that I went to with the other board members. Very impressive. I think the longest was like thirty-seven years.
Yes.
Right, thirty-seven years that they're serving in, you know, education. And as Matt said, or I think Dr. O'Reilly said, I forgot who said it, that, you know, it's these teachers who are in the classroom every day. That is, you know, they are the ones who make our, you know, district strong. They make our district a strong, you know, high performing school. It's about these teachers. So, you know, a little bittersweet to see them go. And I hope that they enjoy their retirement. And if they change my mind, if they change their mind after six months, they can always come back as a substitute. Hundred eighty days. Hundred eighty days, so. They can always, because they're always coming. They can always come back. So any, if, any other public comment? Uh-oh, school board member comments? See none? Can I have a motion to close the?
Motion to close public comments?
Okay.
Or board member comments?
Okay. Oh, we don't, we don't?
No, we don't.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so let's see, what is? Oh, okay. So we're going to go to the privilege session. So according, in accordance with the NJSA Section 10 dot four hyphen twelve, the Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following. Confidential personnel and board matters, pending litigations, student matters, legal matters, and contracts. Now, can I have a motion to adjourn to the privilege session?
Motion, please.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we shall be.
I have a lower.
By the way, we were comparing A1C levels. I have the lowest one, by the way. I may not look it, but I do.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, so we do not expect to come back, so I'll see you guys on Tuesday. All right, good night.